Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting for Monday, May 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We're here in the Village Hall Board Room. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Trustee Mishler, would you please do our land acknowledgement or make our land acknowledgement, please?
Before we begin this evening, we would like to recognize the Seneca Nation on whose ancestral territory we are gathering. The present day Village of Fairport sits on traditional Seneca land. The Seneca Nation with the Mohawk, Cayuga, Anandaga, Oneida, and Tuscarora make up the sovereign Hodenoshoni Confederacy. With respect, we acknowledge the people of the Seneca Nation on whose land we now live. We honor their past, present, and future contributions to and stewardship of this land.
Thank you. Megan, would you take roll call, please?
Trustee Woika?
Here.
Trustee Benaski?
Good evening.
Trustee Mishler?
Here.
Trustee Briggs?
Here.
Mayor Domarats?
Here. Okay. So that will take us to the Citizens Forum before I call up anybody who has a comment, a general comment for the Citizens Forum. If you were here to speak at the Citizens Forum, I hope you signed up on the list over there. If you're here for the public hearing, which will happen next, I hope you signed up over there. And if you forgot to sign up, we're always willing to let you get signed up. So guidelines for public comment, the public may speak only during the Citizens Forum and at any other time that the majority of the board allows. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must step to the front of the room. What you can plan to do is come to the microphone, turn the microphone on if it's not on already, state your name and your address. And then speakers should limit their remarks to five minutes unless a majority of the board allows additional time. Speakers may not yield any remaining time that they have to another speaker. And all remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to individual board members. And all speakers will observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board with written communications. With that, Megan, is there anybody over there for Citizens Forum? I asked people to put Cs or Ps. So who are we going to talk with first?
So the first person is Amber Brown.
Okay. I'm Amber Brown, I live at 46 Nelson Street. And I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that you have the sustainability plan on the docket for June-July. And I can't wait to hear what happens next. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? Thanks, Amber.
Michael Santorillo? Okay. Ginny Mayer?
So this is a little bit about the public forum topic, but it's broader. So I thought it maybe fit better here in the Citizens Forum. Ginny Mayer, 51 Dewey Avenue. I support the amendment to the zoning code. I agree with the legislative finding in the law that the ability to safely traverse the village by foot and other non-automobile modes of transportation is impacted by the presence of drive-through facilities as these facilities are designed for and serve automobile traffic. So that's in the legislative findings for the law that we're talking about today. I agree with this finding, not only because I like to safely traverse the village, but also because if we are to prevent the worst impacts of climate change, we need to stop burning fossil fuels as quickly as possible. Gas-powered automobiles represent over one-third of our greenhouse gas emissions in Fairport and Parrenton. Whatever our local government rules and policies can do to discourage car use and facilitate other non-polluting modes of transportation will help this community do its part to fight climate change. Poll after poll tells us that the majority of people support their local government taking action to fight climate change. My fellow climate activists and I talked to hundreds of visitors at the Fairport Farmer's Market last year who agreed with the statement, "I support local action to combat climate change by reducing fossil fuel emissions." So it's popular. Government actions that help us fight climate change are the most consequential things this board can do as community leaders. We know climate change is happening. 2024 was the hottest year on record, and the last 10 years are the hottest decade. Storms continue to get more destructive and weather more unpredictable. This week is a good example. If future generations are to have the ability to safely traverse the village in any way, we need action now. So I'm here to ask you, once you've passed this ordinance, to address other rules and policies that are also designed for and serve automobile traffic. First, free on-street parking, which is in the way of making bicycle travel a safe alternative. We know from the just-completed parking study that there is abundant, also free, off-street parking in the village center. Experts tell us that when on-street parking is free, people spend more time cruising looking for the best parking spot instead of just parking in a lot and walking. On-street parking causes traffic congestion when people stop to park, makes it less safe to walk because drivers are distracted by the search, and is making it impossible to bike safely on our busiest streets. Because Main Street is a village street, there is nothing stopping you from reducing or ending free-on-street parking here to make room for bicycles, even right now. Second, we have a significant part of the village restricted to single-family zoning, which is a barrier to creating a walkable community, defined as one where most services are within reasonable walking distances from residents, sorry, walking distance from residences. Extensive single-family zoning means our entire community is designed for and serves automobile traffic. Reducing single-family restrictions will help the village become less car-dependent. Because the village is completely in charge of zoning and its own boundaries, you also have significant agency here. Like banning drive-throughs, removing on-street parking, painting bike lanes, and changing our zoning rules costs almost no money. I do understand that unlike banning drive-throughs, these changes are politically difficult. But I also know from experience co-leading five community dialogues about changing zoning rules to meet sustainability goals, that you can have productive, respectful conversations about these issues. You will never face zero criticism if you make these changes. However, the experience of many other communities who have made these changes tells us that once they are made, most communities like the changes that make them more sustainable and less reliant on cars. Unchecked climate change is going to be much more damaging to the people of this community in the future than a bike lane or some triplexes will be. I believe everyone here knows this. The question I have is, are you going to use the power you have to do politically difficult things now or let future residents deal with the consequences you could have played a part in avoiding? So go further than banning drive-throughs. Remove on-street parking, paint bicycle lanes, and remove the zoning rules that require us to be car-dependent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else for Citizens Forum, Megan?
Nancy Hustler?
Okay.
Paul Keat?
Welcome, Paul.
Welcome, how are you?
Good.
Well, the construction started on 45 Briggs Avenue about a month ago. And I just wanted to give a big shout out, oh, Paul Keats, 45 Briggs Avenue. But I just want to give a big shout out to the construction crews and the streets looking really good. And people on our street have really been cooperating each other, parking each other's driveways and whatnot. It's kind of brought the community together, so it's been a good thing. A little rough right now, but I think the end result is going to be fantastic. And I just wanted to say I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. I didn't even think I saw Brian cruising up and down the street a couple of times. But the construction crews have been very accommodating, very nice, very willing to move their vehicles so we can get in and out of the driveway and whatnot. So just wanted to give a big shout out and thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? Okay, then at 6:12, I'll close the Citizens Forum. Well, we're going to move to the public hearing next. Were you going to talk during the public hearing? Okay. And I think a couple of folks have joined since we started. If you wanted to speak during the public hearing, we ask you to sign up over at the sheet that Megan's got. Okay, so Citizens Forum is closed and I will open the public hearing for Local Law Number Two of 2025 to amend Chapter 550 of the Code of the Village of Fairport, Article Three, Definitions, and Article Five, Miscellaneous Regulations. And in summary, it relates that drive-throughs are incompatible with a walkable village and it will take them out of one of the accepted uses for the village, for business uses. So with that, Megan, who do we have on the list for the public hearing?
Amber Brown.
Welcome back, Amber, long time no see.
All right. Do you need my address again?
No.
Okay, great. So one of the things I hope to see in our village is an increased focus on safe bikability and walkability. I think this involves normalizing biking and walking for work and errands, in addition to exercise and recreation, as a first line of thought for people and as something that people in cars are used to seeing. I'm grateful that we don't have any businesses in the village with a drive-through for many reasons. People sit in their cars idling, with their cars idling, and traffic invariably backs up. Just look at Dunkin' Donuts on Fairport Road, it's nuts. Drive-throughs are a pretty clear indication that a village wants people to pass right on through and not come to the village as a destination. It adds unnecessary automobile traffic, which does not foster a safe environment for bikers and walkers. So thank you for voting for this.
Thanks, Amber.
Matt Brown.
Long time no see. Hi, Matt.
Hey, everybody. Matt Brown, 46 Nelson Street also. So yeah, thank you. I'm very much in favor of the bans on drive-throughs. So in our most recent conference of plan, 2021 Conference Plan, 64% of respondents said the reason they live in or visit the village was walkability. It was the number-one reason that people said, you know, they lived or visited here. That's pretty big. And we also have at least a recent storied history of kind of turning down drive-throughs. You know, if you look back at 2008, the Walgreens that was proposed to go in at the Four Corners. Part of the, I mean, there was a lot of reasons why people were opposed to it. But you know, the presence of a drive-through is not a small part of that. 2018, the Dunkin' Donuts that was proposed at Quickley's, very big citizen opposition to that, specifically because of the drive-through. We weren't opposed to a restaurant, just the drive-through part of it. And then even most recently with the Starbucks that's going. And I know people are opposed to that for a number of reasons. But you know, in the beginning before, it was obvious there was going to be no drive-through. That was a big thing that people were talking about. I think banning drive-throughs says who we are. You know, it says that we are very much focused on walkability and bikability and not on, you know, being able to drive into the village, grab something, and drive out. It encourages people to visit more than one business. I think it's also business-friendly for a reason that you might not, maybe you did think of this, I wasn't part of the discussions. But it is easier for a business to know what they're getting into when it's clearly spelled out in the code. You know, vague code is nobody's friend and produces a lot of work for, you know, village and town officials and for businesses. If they come in with a design that is obviously not going to work, you know, this way, they come in, they know, okay, if a drive-through was part of my plan, maybe I go into Parrenton. Well, there's plenty of drive-throughs, you know, people like a drive-through, you don't have to go far to get one. But you know, a business that wants to be a part of the village should know what we want the village to be. So I think it's good rather than, you know, kind of saying no, 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 it's just one big no for reasons that have been, you know, previously elucidated way better than I could. In summary, thank you. This is what I want. I think it's what Fairport wants, and I think it's a really good idea that you guys are putting it on the books. So thank you for all the work that went into this.
Thank you. Okay, who's next, Megan?
Michael Santorello?
Got the name right. It's Old Orchard where I walked from today. And as I did the last weekend when I walked down to the Hoffbrau to listen to Bill de Barrio, and then I walked down to the library, and then I saw Paul Noon's at the Iron Smoke. It's certainly one of the big things that I moved to Fairport for, although I originally started at Homestead where they didn't have sidewalks. So I had to move to Old Orchard because they do have sidewalks. I too am a big supporter of local law too, although it appears, you know, kind of a little minor thing where it's just changing some of the words. Hopefully you had some attorneys working on it. But it defined it as delivery of goods and services while remaining in your car. And it adds that to the prohibited land uses. And I agree so heartily with Matt that it's really a statement of our values of the community. It puts on walkability. It puts drive-throughs on par with junkyards and private dumps as banned uses. We don't have a lot of banned uses, but we got those three. And I think it's also a tool that the government can use to help sustain the walkability in the village. Now, there is one little section, because I happen to be noticing it, I don't usually read Code 550 of the village, but there is a little ambiguity in the remaining unamended section of the code because it bans the use of land for miniature golf. I suspect that this might have been for Charlotte when they had the golf. I don't know when, it was before my time, there was some controversy over miniature golf in the business district. But I'd like to make sure that it be thought about because I don't think that the majority of these people, my people, would object to a miniature golf indoors. Particularly now we have the cannery. I think if I was an investor, I could see doing that. And there's, I think there's actually a virtual driving golf range, not drive-through, but drive-range in there now. I also appreciate this, no cost. This doesn't, no tax dollars, everybody cares about that. But it also shows that we have a long way to go. One of the fundamental purposes, I think, of the village government is to sustain or improve the property values of the citizens. And I think that by investing in the infrastructure, it does that. It sustains our good reputation for historical canal, music scene, and walkability. And walkability doesn't just happen, you have to work at it. Presently, we do not have a cement sidewalk along the entire northern perimeter of the village, nor along much of the eastern perimeter of the village. You can't conveniently walk from the Village Hall to the Town Hall. I do appreciate that County legislator John Baines is working to develop the funding for that. That part costs money. There is another part, though, it doesn't cost much. There's one small area which shouldn't require any other government authorities. No studies, no bidding. Our own great DPDW can do the work on their own, I'm sure they can. Along the north side of Lewis Street from Filkins to just the beginning of Potter Park, baseball fields right there. You won't have to interfere with any of the trees. In summary, we have a long way to walk. The local law too is a step in the correct direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I'm going to have, when we get to the actual local law, I actually went back and, after our discussion this weekend, talked to Jill, our planner, and she'll give the explanation of what that is. And I'm also going to suggest that as we start planning for the future, that we start to keep a little list of, and we've got plenty of programs on our, on our list of sidewalks and streets and everything that we're doing, but for future, you know, for future, maybe if there's any programs that come to the village that we have the ability to fund some sidewalks. So I'll just ask if you could keep a list and we can consider it when we move forward. Doesn't mean that it can happen this week, this year, but we can at least start looking for how we put it into the capital plan to include more sidewalks. So thank you. Okay, who's next, Megan?
Nancy Hustler.
Really? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Each of the board members has three letters in front of you. One, Megan was nice enough to print these out. One is from Cheryl Williams, and one is from Janice Williams, and one is from Nancy Shad. And I would ask, they're all in favor of Local Law Number Two, but just take the time to look through them and Megan will add these to the record for public comment. Some folks asked how they could comment if they couldn't be here in person. So you each have a copy and take your time and read them when you want to. But they're all in favor of Local Law Number Two. So with that, I'm going to close, unless there's anybody who's just joined us who's interested, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing for Local Law Number Two and move forward with our agenda to the unfinished business portion. So item number one is a motion, I need, I'd like a motion by the Village Board to approve the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 regular Village Board meeting.
So moved.
By Trustee Woika?
Second, Trustee Mishler?
Any questions or comments regarding that meeting minutes? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous, and we'll move on to item number two, which is a motion by the Village Board to approve the meeting minutes of April 28th, 2025, Village Board Work Session. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved, Trustee Briggs?
Second.
Trustee Benaski? Or Adam? Trustee Adam? Any questions or comments regarding those meeting minutes? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous as well, which will take us to new business. Let me make sure I have the right form in front of me. Okay. So item number one is a resolution by the Village Board to adopt Local Law Number Two of 2025 to amend Chapter 550 of the Code of the Village of Fairport, Article Three, Definitions, and Article Five, Miscellaneous Regulations. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
By Trustee Benaski?
Second.
By Trustee Mishler? And I know that our attorney was going to go through the Seeker.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you this evening is a series of documents related to the proposed Local Law Number Two of 2025. The resolution before the board has two components. The first component is to satisfy the requirements of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as Seeker. And so the village planner has prepared a proposed Part One, Two, and Three of the environmental assessment form for the board's consideration. I have also reviewed those documents and provided my comments. So the Part One is simply background information on the environmental setting of the law. And because it is a law, we're not taking any actions, we're not, no construction is being proposed. So it's a very simple form to fill out, just identifying the proposed action. The second document is Part Two. What that does is it reviews and evaluates certain environmental criteria. So 18 questions relating to the various aspects of the environment. We've checked no on those, all 18 questions, since again, we're not taking any action in terms of construction or physical activities. It's just the adoption of a local law, so we don't believe any environmental resources will be impacted by the adoption of the law. And then Part Three, taking that information from Parts One and Two, is the document that does the determination of significance. So either a negative declaration, finding there will be no significant adverse impact, or a positive declaration that there may be one or more potential environmental impacts. Because it is a local law that is restricting drive-throughs in the village, it is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. And because no construction activities are proposed, we have recommended a negative declaration. So that would be no environmental impact associated with the action. So these are all proposed forms. If you have any questions or you want to make any changes, we can do so. But otherwise, if they are acceptable, then as part of the resolution, you will adopt a negative declaration and then move on to pass, if you so choose, the proposed local law.
Does anyone have any questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I have reviewed this document and see that there's no negative impact on, by doing this.
Okay.
Negative is positive.
Double negative.
Trustee Briggs, did you have anything? Are you all set right now?
No.
Okay. Anything? Anything? Xander, anything? Okay, we covered it all. I want to say thank you to Jill Wedrick, our planner, for all the dedication and hard work getting this all completed and making it easy for us to understand what's going on with it. I know it's not, it's part of what you do, but you do it very well. So I want to thank you for all the work that you've put into this. It's really greatly appreciated. And zoning is not something that makes everybody happy. So we're really happy that this is coming together tonight. And I just wanted to say that. Okay? And thank you to our village team for working on this. I really appreciate it. So with that, all in favor of this resolution? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Okay. Then this Local Law Number Two is passed. And since I was the person who was really pushing hard on this in 2018 before I was elected, I have to do this. Thank you! I really appreciate it.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure by...
Passing this resolution.
Right. So this is the resolution.
We have passed Local Law Number Two.
Okay. There we go. Yes. Just wanted to make sure we're not in the eyes crossing the teeth.
Yep. The resolution covered both Seeker and the adoption of the law.
I was speaking more just in line with the Seeker. But I am absolutely in love with this law. So I am truly excited this evening to support our residents and our visitors to come to the village and stay in our village and visit multiple locations. And by banning drive-throughs, I believe that that will do, help do that. So fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. With no other comment, if anybody was here specifically just for Local Law Number Two, I'll give you the grace to say you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting or you're welcome to go. I know. I know. Thank you all for coming and showing support. We really appreciate it. Okay. It's a good thing? Okay. So item number two is a motion by the Village of Fairport to appoint Peter Daniel Kacherek to the Hook and Ladder Company of the Fairport Fire Department. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Mishler, second, by Trustee Woika? Questions? Comments?
I believe he's a senior at Fairport High School.
Is he? He doesn't, he goes to Allendale.
No, Peter Kacherek.
Yeah, Peter is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know Peter.
Well, that's terrific.
Yeah. Highly recommend.
I want to thank Peter for volunteering for the fire department. It's without folks like that, we would be unable to staff our volunteer fire department. So thank you to Peter Daniel Kacherek for putting his name in for appointment to the Hook and Ladder Company.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is great. Welcome to the board, Peter.
Okay. All set? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous. That will take us to item number three, a motion by the Village Board to renew the Online Learning Management System Agreement between the Village of Fairport and Cypherworks Incorporated for the term of June 1, 2025, through May 31, 2026, and to authorize Julie M. Domarats as mayor to execute the agreement when received. Any motion, please?
So moved.
By Trustee Briggs?
Second.
By Trustee Benaski? Any questions? It's the system that we currently use for annual trainings that we are required to complete by the state. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. That'll be unanimous. Item number four is a motion by the village board to authorize the clerk treasurer to carry forward to the 2025-2026 fiscal year encumbrances outstanding at the end of the current fiscal year.
So moved.
By trustee Benoski.
Second.
By trustee Woike. Would you just explain for anybody who's joining us what that means?
Yeah, if there's any open contracts with unspent money, it carries that budget over to the next year so we don't lose the money into the next fiscal year.
So like if there was something that was budgeted for paving or putting in a sidewalk and the work wasn't completed yet, so they didn't get the bill in, we're allowed to carry that over so that when that is completed, we can take action on it?
Yeah, like a big one is the Millennium contract was encumbered in total for the budget year we're in, and it'll carry it over.
Okay.
So we can keep spending it.
Just out of curiosity, is there ever a time when we are unable to carry a budget item over that's unspent?
Yeah, if there's no contracts that the boards approved that, and you haven't spent it and you haven't gotten invoice for it, that money is lost.
It has to be appropriated.
Contract invoice or per disorder, you don't encounter.
Got it.
There has to be a mechanism to carry that over because you're basically assuming that lie always going to carry over in the next fiscal year.
Got it, thank you.
So that unspent money just goes back into the capital?
Yeah, okay.
Because losing, it's like, it's not lost.
Got it.
All set?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. That will take us to motion five, or item number five, a motion by the village board to accept the 2025 financial statements for the village of Fairport and the March 2025 financial statements for Fairport Municipal Commission.
So moved.
By trustee Briggs.
Second.
By trustee Benoski. Anything they have noticed that we should?
We got paid by Monroe County for our taxes, so we were paying full in April. A lot of the farmer's market vendor fees were coming in. And then the gross receipts from the landing came in higher than expectation. So we get a portion of their revenue as part of, as part of their rental agreement that came in in April as well.
Great.
And that came in higher than expected.
Yes, yep.
And then I...
Great. I heard you.
I, as part of, I attended the Fairport Electric meeting this morning and they had a very positive discussion about, Holly had a very positive outlook for what was happening at this point due to the fact that we actually had a normal winter in February and March, which is when normally Fairport Electric makes the most of their money to carry back over the negative impacts. And then this is the positive and it balances out before the end of the year. But it was looking very good.
It's so funny how that works when the salt truck is, the salt bill's high, but the...
So Fairport Electric, those reports were very good as well.
That's great.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous, taking us to a motion by the village board to authorize payment of the audited bills.
So moved. And I can follow up with the, I have reviewed all of the bills and found everything to be in order.
And I'm gonna second, and also I have reviewed the monthly bills and found everything to be in order.
It was 2.3 tons.
Of compost.
Yeah. And actually, we're starting, you know, we saw one of the first big numbers coming from Main Street for the invoices there. So, you know, it's nice that we've got things lined up. We've got, you know, the, the bonds that move in there and because we want to make sure we have that in place so that we can pay people when they, they send us the invoices for those. So it's big, but I'm anticipating that we'll probably be seeing even bigger ones as more and more gets done.
Okay, any questions?
We really appreciate you doing the bills every month, both of you.
Practice my math skills.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. Item number seven is a motion by the village board to amend the previously approved amount of $60,000 to pay health and dental insurance premiums paid in the month of May to $56,452.
So moved.
By trustee Woike.
Second.
By trustee Mishler. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. Item number eight is a motion by the village board to authorize the clerk treasurer to pay health and dental insurance premiums for the month of June in an initial estimated amount not to exceed $60,000, subject to audit and amending authorization by the village board at their regularly scheduled June meeting.
So moved.
By trustee Briggs.
Second.
By trustee Woike. It's the same thing we see every month. So seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. And I'm gonna go with committee, before we do committee announcements and committee reports, I just wanted to ask the board for, there was a, with the late agenda item, there was a motion for an executive session that's going to come up after our announcements. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on board with that executive session. And it looks like everybody's okay with that. So we'll go to announcements and committee reports, starting at the far end. Trustee Briggs, anything you wanted to discuss?
Just been out and about. Went to the Finger Lakes Tourism Alliance meeting. Went to a luncheon for the New York Canal Tour Boats Association. Attended the partnership meeting. I'm also on the bicentennial planning committee for when the Seneca Chief, Seneca Chief Erie Canal Boat for the visit in Fairport. It's gonna be here for two and a half days. So planning all sorts of activities with the historian and games and music and walking it in. And did I mention the flotillo and history pieces? So that's coming together. I went to the Fairport Foundation fundraiser, opening day of the farmer's market, the National Comic Book Day. That's always really special. They had a lot of resources for kids at the library and many crafts, and they got to take home four of their favorite comic books. Then many of us were at the ribbon cutting for Fairport Rehab and Nursing, which was the old Baptist home, but now it's very exciting, the things they have going on up there. And then this Friday at 2 o'clock, there's a ribbon cutting. It'll be right out front here on the canal. That'll be for opening and celebrating the, the canal will be opened. And that's on the 16th. And then Saturday is the, the parentin does the recycling day and the shredding day, which is always valuable. I was one of those houses that was built in the 40s and inherited a lot of stuff in the basement. So it's like many of us do with older homes. So that's, that's a great opportunity to load up and get rid of that stuff. And then I believe next week, we have our budget vote for the schools.
May 20th.
Which always has a wonderful art show, too.
That's great. Okay, trustee Mishler?
Just want to bring some awareness to the Memorial Day Parade that's taking place on Monday, the 26th, 10 a.m. And the route is, has been altered just a bit because of all the construction. Actually, the route seems really perfect now. I think that it avoids the railroad tracks. So we will be starting right here in the packets landing parking lot, and it will be ending at Potter this year. And again, the market is open, our farmer's market is open every Saturday. This is, this past Saturday was the second Saturday of the season, and it's open from 7 a.m. to 12. Also be looking for a new business that's opening up Mescalata Men. That's opening, it's coming soon, so be looking for that. And I'm sure you've noticed, the art committee has the signs that are now hanging on the backs of the wayfinding signs. We talked about that at the last, at our last work session meeting, and they look fantastic.
They do.
So I think they're, they look, I knew they weren't gonna look good, but they look even better than I expected, so amazing. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanna echo the May 20th election, and in particular, I want to echo that because you get a chance to see the new tree that was planted on Arbor Day. So go out and check that out there. Yeah, it's right, it's right outside of where you'd go in to vote. So that was super exciting. I want to make sure we take a chance to recognize Mark Lenzey, who's getting his, taking his exams for his master certification there on, Brian, is it master inspector or? Master Code Enforcement official. It's a lot of work. Goes to show a lot to, you know, his professional improvement that he's always going for. And that's just the type of folks who work here, right? So I want to make sure we recognize that. And yeah, make sure you get out to the farmer's market. There are a few new ads there as well. If you're feeling some, some need for empanadas, we got, we got that up there now. So yeah, go out, have some breakfast, see all the fun yummy things and things that you could plant at home.
Did you see the Joanna, Joanna Perrin Garden Club? The planters of the tree?
Oh, yeah, they, yes, I did see them going around.
They had a stand at the farmer's market this weekend. Okay, we'll move on to Heidi.
All right. I am also very excited about the empanadas at the farmer's market. They're so delicious. I also agree about the wayfinding signs and the beautiful pictures that are on the back. It really drew your attention to the wayfinding signs to say, here it is. This is, it was, they're just gorgeous. I also was able to virtually attend the Canalway Working Group meeting last week, so I'm just gonna read a little bit from the notes. It was just different towns in the area that are on the Erie Canal and what they do, how they're trying to brand the Erie Canal for their, for their town or village. So there's a Canal Recreation Way Plan 2050 that was released on Thursday, the 8th of May. So you can go online to the Erie Canalway website and you can see that whole full plan for, for 2050. It's actually a guiding document that sets out a vision for the future of the New York State Canal System, offers, offering shared framework and a set of goals for people and organizations working towards the continued success of the system. There's also some upcoming design guidelines, so you can continue to use your own designs in your, in our parts of the canal or for, you know, the, for the sake of consistency. They have some branded things and some suggestions for bikes, bench racks, benches, garbage cans, light posts, signage, all those things. And just to give consistency across the continuation of the canal as more people set out to use it by foot or by bike. And the last two things, there is an Erie Canalway Trail Amenities Study that will be coming out hopefully by the beginning of June to discuss the different amenities that are available across the entirety of the canal. And basically, not rate, but like stage different areas as whether it has a high amount of amenities, so you kind of know what you're getting into as you travel across the canal. And the, also on May 8th, they had released the Canalway Trail Count Reports that tells you how many people use the canal. So using their methodology, they estimated that the Canalway Trail System sees 3.98 million visitors per year. So just shy of 4 million people travel, travel along the canal every single year. So the report and the interactive dashboard is, you can see what your stretch of trail did, and we can even get a counter in the village if that's something we wanted to move forward with to see how many people are coming through the village of Fairport specifically. So, and yay for composting more this month. Good job, everyone.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for attending that. Okay. Just a reminder, Friday from 2:00 to 3:00 will be the event down at the canal in terms of the canal is opening here. While it's not opening in other portions of the state due to high water, it is opening on this end of the canal in, especially in the village of Fairport. Canal Days, it's, it's never too early to start reminding people that it's coming up. It feels like the month of May is just gonna fly by, and before you know it, it'll be time. So June 6th in the evening, Canal Nights, June 7th and 8th, Canal Days in our village. The Public Art Committee will be doing their annual sidewalk chalk contest, and that is June 7th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And I sent a note to everybody on the village board, giving the timelines for the banners that the, there's going to be a contest that's going to open very soon. Do I have that date here? I think it's going to start, it may have started this week or sometime this week. The art committee will be, the public art committee, okay, so key date, it'll be in the next few days if it hasn't gone up already. The competition to submit artwork for banners that will hang along the canal. And I've submitted to the board via email the schedule that we'll be following so that we'll get to look at all the artwork and provide some input back to the Public Arts I think that was that. Let me go to my notes from this morning. Some very good news coming from FMC. So there are 611 meters in our disc, in our area, our service area, that are left to be changed over, and they will be completed by May 31st. There's going to be a new application coming for Fairport Electric customers that they can go into to utilize. So you'll need to set up a new password and username from whatever you've, from the current application. And it has to do with, we're changing over software at Fairport Electric for billing and for monitoring HR. And so it's a, a large software package, and it has a new app. So that'll be rolling out, Fairport Electric will be announcing that. They will be announcing it on social media, pushing it out to Fairport Alerts. So if you're a Fairport Electric customer and you haven't signed up for Fairport Alerts, please do so, you'll get notifications. The street light, so I just took a note on this, because they were talking about the street lights and the power for the Main Street Scape, that the power is going through the first real update since the 1970s along Main Street. So when people ask, why are you doing all this work? Because we're living with electric lines that were originally placed in the 1970s and applications and desire for electric service has changed a little bit since the 1970s. So we're looking forward to having new electric lines. And the hope is that there will be new streetlights installed at the north end of the village where the work has already begun within the next 45 days. With regard to the electric work, there is some large transformers and festival panels that have to be installed along Main Street. And we all know that festivals are a part of life in our village, so that will help. And the outlook from a Fairport Electric perspective is that while our contractor will be done at the end of October, cross your fingers, on the Main Street Scape, FMC's final work will be completed by the end of the year. So that was the update from the Fairport Electric meeting this morning. And with that, anything else that needed to get shared? Last chance.
Hope everybody... Hope everybody had a pleasant Mother's Day.
Yeah. Thank you. We did.
I did. The weather cooperated. It was amazing.
Definitely. Okay. So that will take us to the upcoming village board meetings. Village Board Work Session, the next one will be held Tuesday, so Tuesday, not Monday, May 27, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. because Monday is Memorial Day. There will be a village board meeting on Monday, June 9, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Both of those meetings will be held here in Village Hall in the boardroom at 31 South Main Street, and we're on the second floor of Village Hall. And after that, I would like a motion to enter executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property.
So moved.
By trustee Benaski, by Adam.
Second, trustee Mishler.
And that is at 6:52. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Then we will enter executive session, and what I'll share with everybody who's either watching online or here live in the boardroom is that we will go to executive session, we will go in, do whatever business that we have, and then once we come out, we will immediately adjourn the meeting. We will not conduct any further business. So you won't miss anything. If you choose not to stick around, and if you're online, the meeting will end in just a moment here, because there will be no more business conducted in the public. Thank you and have a great evening. Thank you to everybody who joined us tonight, whether it was online or here in the boardroom. We appreciate it. Have a good night.